Station. The spacecraft would fit three passengers and a trained flight commander, pretty important there. Once it reaches the space station, passengers can spend at least eight days there. Pricing details haven't been announced yet, but missions could happen as soon as late next year. All right, we told you about the llama who crashed a wedding, or was rather a wedding date, but today, another one of these 250-pound animals is trying to be a finalist in this year's Cadbury Easter Bunny Contest. This is Conswalla, and her numbers are trending this morning. She's in the top 10 on the candy company's website. Conswalla's owner says she's more than just a pretty face, she actually gives back to the community.
She's become a registered therapy animal through Pet Partners, which is an amazing organization, and she's proven that she can stay calm under pressure and visit with people. So she visits a senior center locally once a month.
Wow, okay, if you think she's deserving, you can cast a vote for Conswalla on the Cadbury website. She's cute. I like her.
She's kind of like, can I have some of the cake?
Yeah, she's like, let's get this show on the road. Claire, you know, weather-wise here, we're saying, kind of a meh Friday, but things turn around big time.
Yeah, I mean, compared to earlier this week, today's gonna be cold, a little blustery out there, but the weekend, it does get better. Now, this morning, we are waking up to a little bit of a wintery mix out there, mainly just some light snow. Lansing down towards Jackson, you're stuck with some light, potentially moderate snow. Most of this is melting as soon as it hits the ground, so streets are just wet. Still watch out for a few slick spots on the roads. Temperatures this morning hovering right above freezing, 33 in Lansing, 34 in Jackson. It gets warmer this weekend. I'll have the forecast in a few minutes.
Can't wait, we can make it.
Yes.
All right, thanks, Claire. Bob and Deb coming up next on the Morning Blend. We'll be right back, stay with us.
You're watching Fox 47 Morning News at 7.
Heather Hatton is the president of the Holt Wrestling Club. She brought with her today Chaz King, who is a financial representative with Modern Woodman of America, Chuck King, who is a comedian and hypnotist, along with Rocky Schaft, the longtime wrestling coach at Holt High School. Heather, you have a big event coming up for a really important cause, and it's gonna be so much fun. Tell everybody what it is.
It is gonna be amazing. We're teaming up with Modern Woodman of Maricot to give to the community, raise money for wrestling mats on March 14th. It's a comedy, magic, and hipness show. We're bringing in some great acts, and it's gonna be a blast for everybody to come and attend to.
So Rocky, you've been a coach, a wrestling coach, for a while now. Talk about the mats. Why do we need new mats?
We need new mats. These mats are getting old, but they got underwater. And once they wear away, they proceed, the water gets in them, and they can't come back out, and it now is coming through the surface of the mats, and it wears them out, and of course, it's not safe then. And of course, the little contact sport of wrestling, we do need to have a safe environment. But we've been fighting with things and, you know, trying to get to this point, and...
What a great fundraiser. This is a good fundraiser, and it's on Saturday, March 14th, Holt High School, right?
Yes.
How much are tickets?
$20 apiece, and you can get a family pack of four for $75, so a little discount deal there.
But here's the caveat, is there something really fun happening too at this fundraiser? Talk about that.
We have world-class entertainment coming in. David Kaplan, who is literally a world-renowned magician, he's actually flying in to do this for us. He's an amazing magician and juggler, and my dad Chuck King, who's been in the entertainment business his whole life, been on The Tonight Show, HBO, all these kinds of things, he's gonna do a little bit of magic and hypnosis as well. All family-friendly, so you could bring the little kids, you could bring the grandparents. PG-rated show that everybody can enjoy.
And I've seen Chuck, his show before. It's fantastic, it's so much fun, and it's kind of audience participation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Two things, we'll make memories and we'll make stars.
And Chaz, this is a little personal to you as well, you're a longtime wrestler.
That's right, yeah. I started with the Holt Wrestling Club when I was about five years old, and was part of the state championship team in 2008, so it's really surreal for me, and very fulfilling to be able to do this and help give back. It's, you know, we gotta raise close to $60,000 for the new wrestling mats, so it'll be fun.
Well, guys, thank you so much for doing this, first of all, and again, Saturday, March 14th, Holt High School. Get your tickets, the message is on the screen there, and we appreciate Modern Woodman for doing that.
We're looking forward to it, it's gonna be a great night.
Weekend, it's the March Paint Party at Dimes Brewery House in Diamond Dale. It's 2 to 5 Sunday. Now, you can enjoy beer while painting home decor. All skill levels are welcome, and to register, just head to the website listed on your screen. Now, we'll have more local events and things to do right here on Fox 47, so if you have an event you want to share, send us an email. That's to AroundTown@Fox47News.com. And now it's time to check in with our Around Town reporter to see what else is coming up right here in mid-Michigan.
Around Town Kids!
Hi, my name is Savannah from Northwest Elementary School, and here's what's going on around for town for kids like me. Come to the Jackson Antique and Flea Market Show at the new American One Expo Center. It is their biggest event inside. Whether you are a collector or a picker, you are sure going to find a bargain. For more info on events like this, go to Fox47News.com. My name is Savannah, now back to the Fox 47 studios.
All right, thank you, Savannah. Well, one of the top stories in Michigan right now, Art Van Furniture planning on closing all of their stores. The company is based in Warren. Yesterday, they announced they'll close all Art Van Furniture, Art Van Pure Sleep, and Scott Schuptrine Interior Stores. Liquidation sale set to start today. Gerber is stepping their game up when it comes to being more environmentally friendly. They're releasing a reusable baby pouch. Now, this is the latest effort in Gerber's mission to make all of their packaging recyclable or reusable by 2025. The food pouch will be available in May. And after, after you watch your Fox 47 Morning News here, get yourself a free donut at Dunkin' Donuts. Every Friday this month, they're giving away a free donut with any drink purchase. Now, you do have to be a member of DD Perks. You can sign up on the Dunkin' app or at DDPerks.com. The deal is available at participating locations. They're also running a contest. Four people can win free donuts for a year. All right, listen to this, our dogs may need therapy. Finnish researchers surveyed almost 14,000 dog owners. They found 72% of those dogs showed problematic behaviors. The most common, being with older dogs, like anxiety, noise sensitivity. Younger dogs were likely to be inattentive or even hyperactive. Male dogs tend to be more aggressive and hyperactive. Females tend to be more female, and tend to be more fearful, rather. There we go. And this morning, listen to this really cute story here, one dog has his forever home after five and a half years of living in a Kansas shelter. This is six-year-old Merrick. He was only a pup when he got to the shelter. Recently, volunteers made a big push to find Merrick a forever home. They spent thousands of hours on social media and even bought billboard space to tell his story. Yesterday, it all worked out.
Breaks my heart that he sat there, but I think that it was destined that he waited that long until I was ready for another dog.
Wow, now Jordan is Merrick's new and first owner. Shelter volunteers say they're already looking for their next dog to help find a home for. I love this story.
Looks like such a sweetie.
I know, he's good, he's a cute pup, too.
He is. Well, I'm glad he finally got his, you know, forever home.
And he knows it, too, you can just see by the look on his face.
He's so happy.
Love that story. And, you know, weather-wise, we're saying here, gorgeous-looking weekend, just gotta get through today first.
Yeah, today's not the nicest, but we have the weekend coming, so we'll get through it.
We'll get there.
Now, this morning, we are waking up to a little bit of a wintery mix out there. Right now, it's mainly just some wet snow. Lansing kind of in the thick of it right now with some light, more moderate snow. Jackson also seeing some light snow. It's not really having any major problems on the roadways, they're just a little bit on the wet side. A lot of the snow is melting as soon as it hits, but still watch out for a few isolated slick spots on the roads. Temperatures this morning were hovering just above freezing. It's 33 currently in Lansing, 34 in Jackson and Mason, 35 outside in Charlotte. Factor in the breeze, and wind chills are down in the 20s. Currently feels like 25 in Lansing, 29 the current wind chill this morning in Jackson. Now, we are going to kind of stay stagnant for most of the day, really only warm up into around the mid to upper 30s, with mostly cloudy skies, and we're also going to be breezy for most of the day. That likely means it's going to feel more like we're in the 20s rather than the 30s, but this weekend, like we said, makes up for it with highs near 60 by Sunday. That forecast in a few minutes.
Right, maybe rest up, nap today, so we can make the most of this weekend.
Exactly, stay inside today and then spend it all outdoors tomorrow on Sunday.
Can't wait. All right, thanks, Claire. Well, coming up after the break here, why a Lansing man is in federal custody this morning, and how the investigation will play out from here.
You're watching Fox 47 Morning News at 7.
We at Fox 47 are working to bring awareness to help find fugitives from here in Michigan. Demetrius Echolcan is wanted for multiple drug charges and forgery. He's known to be in the Jackson area, and Edward Gollamore is wanted for dangerous drugs by the University of Michigan Department of Public Safety. Now, he is known to be in the Lansing area. If you have any information on either of these fugitives, you are asked to call the number listed on your screen. This morning, a Lansing man is in federal custody. He's accused of making child pornography. The Department of Homeland Security says 26-year-old Michael McShan forced a 16-year-old to send nude photos and videos of herself and her sister. Federal agents searched McShan's home on Grand River Wednesday, claiming he produced child pornography. A detention hearing is set for this afternoon at 1:00. That's when a judge will decide whether McShan will stay in custody or be released while his case continues. And Warren De La Salle's president, John M. Knight, has been fired. A football hazing case is moving through court right now. Seven players face charges in connection with alleged hazing that happened in October night, and his attorney says his firing is retaliation for reporting the suspected abuse to police. We'll be tracking this story for you. And the former president of the United Auto Workers Union has been charged with corruption. Prosecutors allege Gary Jones conspired with others to embezzle more than $1 million. Jones quit in November and has been under scrutiny for months. Well, he's charged with conspiracy in a document titled "A Criminal Information" that signals a guilty plea is likely. Since 2017, 10 officials and an official spouse have pled guilty. The union is now led by Rory Gamble. He has promised to reform the culture in the UAW. Today, the mother of two missing children will make her first appearance in an Idaho court. Lori Vallow was extradited from Hawaii to face charges. There's an investigation into her missing seven-year-old son and 17-year-old daughter. Vallow has been in Hawaii for the last several months, the same amount of time since her children were last seen. She's charged with deserting them and obstructing the investigation to find them. Police say Vallow has refused to tell them where her children might be. And an innocent woman shot and killed in St. Louis. Police say she was caught in a line of fire. They say she was driving between two cars, and the shot caused her to crash, and she was thrown from the car. Now, four others were inside that car. A teenage girl was also shot and is in serious condition. Another passenger has a broken arm. Two toddlers who were in the car have minor injuries.
The shooters that were in the two vehicles that were involved in the gun battle, all those individuals ran from the scene and are at large at this point in time. We don't know if they're suffering from any injuries or not.
Police say a total of six cars either crashed or were hit by gunfire. We have new details now about the Pulse nightclub memorial. Chris Guardato reports on all of this.
The early design by French architectural firm Coldifier Associates has three parts. The plan is to have the original Pulse nightclub building intact, with a cross-section taken out for visitors to walk through. The walls on each side will be granite. Planners say music will vibrate through those walls. A third of a mile away on West Kaylee Street, a Tower of Memories will be built and serve as a museum with exhibits to memorialize the shooting that claimed 49 lives in 2016. Lastly, a shaded survivor walk on Orange Avenue near the nightclub and stretching into downtown with sculptures. The designers say this project will transform south of downtown Orlando.
We were required to give a vision of how this project can be a future spine, giving some soul to this district.
Some of the Orlando residents who showed up tell us they were impressed with the designs.
Oh, I think it's gonna be beautiful. I think it's gonna be great for the city, too, to have, to open up that section of Orlando and have trees and parks and a place where people can gather.
However, these plans could change. Coldifier says feedback from these presentations could alter their vision.
We are collecting, we are meeting everyone, and after about a month from now, we're gonna go back to our office and integrate all those comments, so the design may evolve.
The design team says construction will likely be done by 2022 or 2023. But today, President Trump will be in Nashville. He'll be seeing firsthand the areas hit by this week's tornado. At least 24 people were killed, and more than 100 buildings have been demolished in Nashville and surrounding areas. The National Weather Service says a total of eight twisters hit the area Monday night through early Tuesday morning. And last night, country's biggest stars manned the phones for a tornado relief telethon. They worked with TV stations and the American Red Cross to collect donations for disaster relief. Lady Antebellum and Avenue Beat appeared, Kid Rock, Dave Haywood, and Gavin DeGraw were also there. More than $385,000 was raised during the three-hour event. You can still donate now by going to redcross.org. With the coronavirus, there's another thing you'll want to sanitize, it's your phone. Studies suggest the average phone is 10 times dirtier than a toilet seat. Liz McLaughlin shows us how to disinfect it properly.
Wash your hands, wash your hands, wash your hands.
Simple advice you've probably been hearing more often.
Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth.
Even if you're following suit...
I haven't touched my face in weeks, in weeks.
Those efforts may be short-sighted if clean hands come in contact with a grimy phone.
What we know about viruses and bacteria in general is that they do live on surfaces.
Some can survive for more than a week. Before you break out the bleach, most newer phones have screens that can be damaged by harsh chemicals. Instead, phone manufacturers suggest wiping it down with a damp cloth.
You could also try one of these inexpensive screen protectors. It covers your screen, so then you could use one of the heavy-duty cleaners without worrying about damage.
There are also portable phone cleaners, such as the Hand Swipe or the Phone Soap Shine.
It's really just a portable spray and cloth in one that you could just pop in your purse.
UV sanitizers like this one from Phone Soap promises to kill 99.9% of germs. It's probably a good idea to avoid touching your phone after contact with shared surfaces, such as handrails, HEMs, or airport security bins.
We really probably need to rethink using our phones in places like this and decontaminating them on a regular basis.
A push to disinfect dirty devices as the coronavirus outbreak continues to spread.
Well, today is actually the perfect day to clean your phone and put it down, that's because today, the first Friday in March, is the National Day of Unplugging. Think of it as an opportunity to remember life before cellphones and tablets, right? So instead of checking Facebook, you can pick up a book or meet for coffee with a friend, even. All right, we're gonna toss things over now to Claire for a look at the weather. Claire, if you're gonna meet for coffee with a friend, you're gonna want to grab the jacket this morning, at least.
Yeah, the jacket and probably one with a hood, because we are seeing a little bit of some drizzle and some isolated snow this morning. Here's a live look in east Lansing, where it's just looking like raindrops on that camera, but some of it is actually coming down as snow. You can see it a little bit there on the camera, and we are seeing a little bit of that wintery mix out there this morning. It's not having a major impact on roadways, but it is making them a little bit on the wet side, so watch out for a few slick spots. Most of the snow, though, is melting as soon as it makes contact with the ground. So satellite radar out there this morning, you can see some light snow surrounding the Lansing area. You're seeing some of those darker purples indicating the chance for a little bit more moderate snow, but again, most of it's melting. If you see anything, collect, it's going to be on grassy surfaces, and it won't be much more than a dusting. To the south, Jackson extending down towards Adrian, just a little bit of some light snow out there as well. Again, a lot of it is melting as soon as it makes contact with the ground, so watch out for a few slick spots. Otherwise, though, as the system continues to move off to the east, we'll see a lot of that go with it. High pressure moves in behind the system, so by the time we hit the afternoon hours, we should be done with any snow, and we'll be dry for the rest of the week. Your future tracks, we go hour by hour. Again, snow lingers this morning, but we should be dry by the afternoon. From there, it'll take a while, but we'll gradually see those clouds kind of dissipate, maybe seeing some sunshine just in time for the end of the day. From there, we see clearing take place overnight, and Saturday, it's looking beautiful. In fact, most of the weekend is. We're gonna see lots of sunshine, and it will be a little bit warmer tomorrow with highs in the upper 40s. It gets even warmer on Sunday with highs that reach into the upper 50s across the area. Now, temperatures this morning, it's on the cold side, 33 degrees currently in Lansing, it's 34 this morning in Jackson and Mason. We do have a breeze coming in primarily from the north this morning, anywhere between about 5 to 15 miles an hour. It's giving us wind chills down in the 20s. Currently feels like 24 this morning in Lansing, 29 the current wind chill in Jackson. We are going to see highs in the upper 30s today, but it will be breezy. That north wind at 10 to 20 miles sticking around pretty much all day, and that'll likely give us wind chills down in the 20s. A little bit of that mix this morning, changing over to mostly cloudy this afternoon. Tonight, we drop down to around 20 degrees, decreasing clouds, turning mostly clear by Saturday morning. In your 7-day forecast, a beautiful weekend ahead, 47 and mostly sunny tomorrow on Saturday, 58 and mostly sunny on Sunday. Most of next week, temperatures stay pretty mild, 56 on Monday with some scattered rain, a few showers Tuesday morning, but then we're dry in the afternoon, a high near 50, 43, and a little bit of a wintery mix on Wednesday, but Thursday, we're back up to temperatures around 50 degrees with some sunshine.
And we love it, we'll take it, all of it.
Yeah, especially this weekend, it's going to be beautiful.
I cannot wait, so excited.
Same.
All right, thanks, Claire. Well, coming up after the break, one woman ringing in her birthday, but probably not in the way you'd expect. We'll tell you how she's welcoming her 100 years, stay with us.
You're watching Fox 47 Morning News at 7.
Now with Court TV for a look at the cases coming up today.
I'm Viddy Palatian. Coming up today on Court TV, coverage of two big trials, one in Los Angeles. It's California versus Robert Durst, the man made famous by the HBO docu-series The Jinx, on trial for murder from 2000. Also, we're covering a case down in Polk County, Florida. That's the defendant, he's accused of shooting execution-style, a man who was set up, according to prosecutors, after going on a dating app. We are live in Polk County, Florida, and California today on Court TV.
Well, a 100-year-old woman checked something off her bucket list. She wanted to go to jail. Ruth Bryant lives at an assisted living center in North Carolina. Now, she had never been to jail, but says she always wanted to, so the local sheriff's department agreed to arrest her for her 100th birthday. Now, she actually only spent a few minutes in the jail cell, but she, I like the kick there, she also got her very own orange jumpsuit. I mean, you know, to each their own, I guess.
Oh, that's pretty funny. I do like that little kick she gives there, that's really, it's funny.
She's like trying to play the whole bad girl card.
Yeah, trying to play the role.
A little smile when she's getting her mug taken.
It's cute.
Well, happy birthday, of course, her, too. You know, Claire, we're talking kind of a, maybe not the best day, but this weekend looks gorgeous.
Yeah, today's not the nicest. This weekend, though, kind of makes up for all of it, so it should be pretty nice. This morning, we're waking up to a little bit of a wintery mix out there. It's mainly snow in the Lansing and the Jackson area, and it should be on the lighter side. It's enough that the roadways, though, are getting a little bit slick in some spots. It should mostly just kind of melt as soon as it hits the ground, and that will stick with us at least through the morning hours before we dry out this afternoon. Now, currently, it's just above freezing, 33 currently in Lansing, 34 the temperature this morning in Jackson, the same in Mason. Wind chills still down in the 20s, feels like 24 in Lansing, 29 the current wind chill in Jackson. For our Friday, we're expecting temperatures that rise into the mid and upper 30s. It will be chilly and breezy all day, but this weekend, like we said, makes up for it, highs near 60 by Sunday.
We cannot wait.
Yeah, definitely spend outdoors this weekend.
Yes, as long as you can.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Claire. Well, the Morning Blend is coming up next, we'll be back at 8:00, stay with us.
You're watching Fox 47 Morning News at 7.
This morning on the Blend, we have back with us Dr. Charles Moke, who is the founder of Allure Medical. Good to see you, welcome back.
Thanks for having me.
Remind our viewers what Allure Medical is.
We're a medical practice, and we're based here in Detroit in Michigan, and we have an office in Lansing. And we have a lot of services we offer, but what we're mostly focused on was called venous insufficiency, which is a circulation problem. It's a problem with the venous circulation versus the arterial circulation of mostly the legs.
Who's at risk of vein disease?
It really can be anybody, but it is genetic, so, and it does occur more as you get a little bit older, it occurs at any age. But basically, it's related to varicose veins, but it's really kind of a different thing. So what happens is that your heart pumps and pushes blood down to your feet, and that's your pulse and your blood pressure. And it's gotta get this way back up, and it goes through your veins. And it relies on the calf muscle to pump it up into your thigh, and your thigh to pump it up in your belly, and it get up into your heart. And what happens when these one-way valves fail, that's what keeps it from going back the other way. The blood kind of sits there. And the microvaricose veins, which is really where the technology started to do what we're doing now to treat venous insufficiency, so it can cause veins to get bigger and ropey, but it can also cause swelling and heaviness and redness or blotchiness in your leg, cause aching. In a worst-case scenario, if it's not treated, it can actually cause sores on the legs, which we call venous stasis ulcers, and that's really what we want to prevent.
So it seems like we haven't really heard about vein disease in the past. Why is that?
It's sort of a lack of understanding. So when you have, like, you know, your pulse, you can put your finger on it, feel it, and your doctor can check your blood pressure, but the technology to detect vein disease going on is really kind of modern. We use something called ultrasound that sends sound waves through the skin and bounces back and listens for it, and we can see this, because these veins don't have, they only don't have a pulse. You can't feel them, you can't measure with blood pressure cuff. So before, when people had these symptoms, we thought, well, this is just part of getting older, and your legs just kind of hurt, and you have to live with it. But now we know there's actually a specific cause that we can identify with an ultrasound, and we can actually fix it.
Does insurance cover treatments at Allure Medical?
Yes, it covers, typically, all insurance companies cover it, even Medicare, if it's medically necessary, if you have symptoms.
Okay. So talk about some of the treatments at Allure.
So typically, the person comes in that's got either varicose veins that are kind of heavy legs or swelling legs, or they might even see varicose veins, but they have heavy sore, aching legs, or blotchiness or discoloration, and we do an ultrasound, which is not painful, you don't feel it. This is a device that runs over the skin, and it gives us a three-dimensional map, and we can figure out what causes this problem in the first place. And there's usually one or two veins that went haywire, and they started growing all kinds of problems. So we identify that, and we do a procedure that's, it's not a surgical procedure, it's just a non-surgical procedure. We put a device inside the vein, numb it up, and it more or less burns it, and the blood reroutes to the normal, healthy blood.
If you'd like more information, we're gonna put your information on the screen, Allure Medical, 273-2201, or AllureMedical.com. Thank you, Dr.
Today on Fox 47 Morning News at 7.
We are following breaking news this morning of a possible shooting in Jackson. Plus, what we know after a fire in Delhi Township, and how mid-Michigan is now taking steps to prevent the spread of the coronavirus. It is Friday, March 6th, your Fox 47 Morning News starts right now.
Fox 47 Morning News at 7 starts now.
Good Friday morning! Welcome to your Fox 47 Morning News. I'm Julie Williams.
And I'm meteorologist Claire Cameron.
Claire, we made it. It's Friday, we can confirm. And we know today, weather-wise, it's not the best day, but this weekend, we can't wait.
Yeah, this weekend will be beautiful, just a little bit of a blustery, chilly, snowy-ish kind of day to get through. The snow will be mainly this morning, and it's not really bad. A live look at the satellite and radar, it looks worse than it actually is. Really, we're just dealing with a little bit of a more of a mix out there. It's showing up mostly as snow right now, but Lansing down towards Jackson, seeing some light scattered snow. It's, most of it is melting as soon as it hits the ground, so it's not really having any major impact on the roads out there. Do watch out for a few slick spots, just in case, but again, this should be out of here by this afternoon. The rest of the day, just a little bit windy and chilly. The rest of the day, just a little bit windy and chilly. Temperatures right now, we're just above freezing for most of us, 33 currently in Lansing, 34 this morning in Jackson and Mason, it's 35 in Charlotte. Our wind chills are down in the 20s, though, currently feels like 23 in Lansing, 27 the current wind chill in Jackson. It is going to be pretty chilly today, just because we are expecting winds to be pretty strong coming in from the north at about 10 to 20 miles an hour. Our 800 Hanson's weather kid for today is Dallas, he is four years old from Okemos. Expect a high of 37 degrees, a little bit of that mix early, then we'll trend mostly cloudy for the rest of the day, but again, it'll feel more like the 20s, so just be sure to bundle up. The weekend, though, we make up for it.
Exactly, you know, today's probably not our favorite weather day, but we got sunshine, almost 60 coming.
60 for Sunday, yeah, so I mean, most of this weekend, this weekend, great, we'll take one bad day, it's not, you know, the worst.
We can handle it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you Claire. Well, we start with breaking news of reports of a possible shooting in Jackson at Duffy's Food and Spirits on Waterloo. We got multiple calls of a possible shooting around 1:45 this morning, and no word yet exactly on if anyone was hurt, or how many injuries there may be. Police had the area closed down as they investigated, and our crew on scene says a car was towed out of that parking lot. Now, we are working right now to find out exactly what happened, we'll keep you updated right here on Fox 47. And we're also working right now to find out what caused a fire at Woodland Lake Apartments on Del Road. It happened around 12:15 this morning, and officials on scene tell us no one was hurt, and that they were able to quickly put that fire out. We'll keep you updated on this situation, of course, as we learn more here, too. The Lansing School Board has voted unanimously not to renew Mark Coscarella's contract, but now, they have to fill their top two positions. Fox 47's Cody Butler has more.
Vote is eight to zero.
Thank you, the resolution is adopted.
The decision not to renew Mark Coscarella's contract came after a 20-minute closed-door session. Lansing School Board President Gabriel Lawrence says even though Coscarella's contract isn't going to be renewed, he's still getting paid while on leave.
We know, we're confident in our investigator's report, and we know what the result will be of non-renewal of the contract.
Lawrence says the reason Coscarella wasn't fired is because that would require another level of investigation that wouldn't be feasible. Coscarella's conduct initially came into question when Casey Sterling told News 10 in October, Coscarella locked his classroom door, took off his clothes, and propositioned her while she was a student teacher at Hope Public Schools. When that story broke, Coscarella was the leading candidate to be Lansing's next superintendent. As the events unfolded, the board went with a nationwide search and is interviewing seven candidates next week. Lawrence is hoping the search process will move the district past the investigation.
We really hope that these people who we're bringing in for interviews next week are not distracted by this huge distraction that this has become.
Lawrence says whoever is named the next superintendent will decide who replaces Coscarella.
As far as the board is concerned, our executive team members are members of our family.
Coscarella's contract ends June 30, the board hopes to hire a superintendent by July 1. And today, Lansing Mayor Andy Shore and Ingham County Health officials will talk about coronavirus preparation and prevention. There have been 12 deaths in the U.S. from the virus, 11 in Washington, and one in California. There are more than 225 cases across the country, but there are no confirmed coronavirus cases here in Michigan. Governor Whitmer has created task forces focused on stopping the spread of the coronavirus. Now, experts say the best way to prevent the spread, wash your hands for at least 20 seconds, and just avoid touching your face. If you're sick, stay home. We'll be at today's meeting, and we'll let you know what happens. The Democratic presidential candidates making a break for Michigan before Tuesday's primary tonight. Bernie Sanders will be in Detroit for a rally, and then Grand Rapids Sunday. Joe Biden is reportedly making a stop in Gross Point Farms Monday, and then a public event in Detroit. Elizabeth Warren was scheduled to be in Lansing tonight, but canceled her event after dropping out of the race. And we are just less than a week away from Michigan's primary, but we won't see election results as quickly as we're used to. There's a surge of absentee ballots this year. Now, as of today, more than half a million absentee ballots have already been cast, and that is an 80% increase from 2016. State officials say that increase means more work for clerks on Election Day, and they say they're working now to speed up the process for November. Secretary of State Jocelyn Benson wants state law to change to let clerks assemble absentee ballots 75 days before the election instead of 60.
I'm hopeful that Tuesday will show even more why that additional time is necessary for moving forward with our elections, and frankly, the national spotlight that will be on our stage throughout the year.
We don't know yet just exactly how much longer it'll take to get Tuesday's results. Benson says, though, we should expect them Wednesday. Well, there's a lot more to come here on your Fox 47 Morning News. Coming up after the break, why AG Nessel says she can't step in yet in the sexual abuse investigation into a former U of M doctor. Plus, how Facebook says they're trying to stop the spread of misinformation before the 2020 census. And why a major furniture company closing their doors across the state, stay with us.
And while today's not the nicest, this weekend kind of makes up for it, sunshine, 47 Saturday, near 60, and plenty of sun on Sunday. Have a look at your full seven-day forecast, coming up after the break.
You're watching Fox 47 Morning News at 7.
Well, good morning, it is Friday, and unfortunately, not the nicest start to the day. A live look in East Lansing, where we are seeing some snow coming down at the moment. It's showing up as a little bit of some rain on the camera out there, but you can see the roadways are wet. No snow has really started to collect, if you do see any collect, it'll be mainly on those grassy surfaces. Still watch out, though, for a few slick spots on those roadways, just in case the snow does start to stick a little bit. A lot of it, though, again, is melting on contact, just making those roadways a little bit on the wet side. Your satellite and radar this morning, it looks a little bit worse than it actually is, we are still seeing some light snow falling, at least in the Lansing area, a little bit of some of those darker purples just off to the east. A few pockets of some more moderate snow are possible, at least early this morning. To the south, Jackson, just dealing with some light snow that extends off to the east towards Ann Arbor. Again, most of the snow is melting as soon as it hits the ground, but watch out, just in case, there are a few slick spots out there on area roadways. All of this is associated with an area of low pressure that continues to spin off to the east. As it continues to move that direction, we should dry out by this afternoon, high pressure will follow, now it'll hold through the weekend, and it should be beautiful and warmer both Saturday and Sunday. Now, our future track, as we go hour by hour for today, a little bit on the messy side this morning with some of that scattered snow, we should be dry by the time we hit the afternoon hours, and then from there, it's just going to be a little bit chilly, temperatures in the 30s and blustery, winds coming in from the north at about 10 to 20 miles an hour, making it feel more like in the 20s for most of the day. As we progress towards the evening, it should start to see a lot of those clouds break apart, turning mostly sunny just for a short time at the end of the day, that we stay clear through the overnight hours. Saturday, it will be beautiful, mostly sunny pretty much throughout the entire day, you'll be hard pressed to even find just a few high clouds in the afternoon. Temperatures will be warmer, reaching into the upper 40s, and winds will also be lighter, so it'll actually feel like the upper 40s outside. Sunday looks just as nice with temperatures in the upper 50s. Now, temperatures right now, a little bit on the cold side, 33 degrees currently in Lansing, it's 34 this morning in Jackson, the same in Mason. Winds starting to come in primarily from the north, anywhere between about 5 to 15 mile per hour sustained winds, that's giving us wind chills that are down in the 20s. Currently feels like 24 this morning in Lansing, 27 the current wind chill outside in Jackson. Highs today will reach into the upper 30s, but with those persistent northerly winds, it'll likely feel more like the 20s, unfortunately, for a good portion of the day. A little bit of a mix this morning, we should be dry by the afternoon. Tonight, we drop down to around 20 degrees with clearing skies, should be mostly sunny by the time we wake up on Saturday. In your seven-day forecast, this weekend is beautiful, 47 and mostly sunny Saturday, 58 and sunshine on Sunday. Also, a reminder, we do spring forward Sunday morning, that means we lose an hour of sleep, but thankfully, the weather's so nice, we really shouldn't mind. And then most of next week stays spring-like with temperatures mainly in the 50s, one short stay in the 40s on Wednesday.
But it is nice seeing pretty much consistently 50s or almost 50, you know?
Yeah, and I mean, this weekend, you couldn't ask for nicer weather, gorgeous.
We're so excited, we need this.
We really do, we need like, you know, a nice weekend that feels like spring.
Exactly, looking forward to it. All right, thank you Claire. Well, we have breaking news right now, Jackson PD has confirmed that this morning's shootings outside of Duffy's Food and Spirits was fatal. They say when they arrived on scene, they found a 25-year-old man unresponsive. That man was taken to the hospital where he was pronounced dead shortly after. Now, this is an ongoing investigation, and of course, Fox 47 News will be following this for you, and will bring you any updates as soon as we have them. Well, this morning, survivors of alleged abuse are demanding an Attorney General investigation. They say they suffered at the hands of former U of M doctor Robert E. Anderson. Three men shared their stories yesterday, some for the first time publicly. The alleged abuse happened from the 70s to the 90s. Now, their lawsuits accuse the university of failing to remove Anderson, even with multiple complaints about him.
And what happened here was a 30-year lie. The best and brightest of this state, the best and brightest of this state, were savaged by Dr. Anderson. And we know, people in the university in positions of power knew and did nothing.
Well, Michigan Attorney General Dana Nessel says she cannot investigate U of M yet, because she says she can't start an investigation until the university agrees to cooperate. It would have to waive all privileges, including attorney-client privilege, and fully cooperate in any law enforcement investigations.
Even though I love the university in Michigan, and they are my alma mater, I can assure you that we would be completely objective in terms of any investigation into this, and if anything, I want, I want my university to be the best that it can be, and that means to be a university that we can send our sons and our daughters.
Her office has asked for state House and Senate approval of a $1 million investment into the investigation. That's the same amount of additional funding used in the Larry Nassar investigation. And a decision in the lawsuit against former MSU head coach Mark Dantonio may not come until next week. Former MSU football staffer Curtis Blackwell is suing Dantonio, Luanna K. Simon, Mark Hollis, and other MSU officials for wrongful termination and unlawful arrest. Well, their lawyers want the suit dismissed. The judge is expected to rule next week. Now, last month, Blackwell also accused Dantonio of violating NCAA recruiting rules. Dantonio denied that, but resigned a few hours after those claims went public. The NCAA is investigating those claims right now. And coming up after the break, big changes could be coming to the way and to where you travel, we'll tell you how after the break.
You're watching Fox 47 Morning News at 7.
Is preparing to sign an $8 billion package to fight the coronavirus, Tracy Potts has the latest now.
On this vote, the yeas are 96, the nays are one.
Congress has approved an $8.3 billion emergency relief package, most of it to fight the deadly coronavirus.
We have plans for every single possibility, and I think that's what we have to do. We hope it doesn't last too long.
But as President Trump visits the CDC today, there are big delays in making test kits available to states, hospitals, and clinics.
We don't have enough tests today to meet what we anticipate will be the demand going forward.
It's critical that we get this test back quickly, so that we can move patients through the emergency department.
At least 12 people have died in the U.S., more than 200 have been diagnosed with the first cases in Tennessee, Nevada, Colorado, and Maryland. New York City is urging travelers from five countries to self-isolate for two weeks.
It was less than having the flu for me.
It's moving quickly out west, a third of those cases are near Seattle. Tech companies there telling workers to stay home.
Right now, it's just mostly tumbleweeds.
A cruise ship headed to San Francisco isn't being allowed to dock, 35 people onboard have symptoms, passengers asked to stay in their rooms.
It's kind of a little bit disturbing being out here in the open seas, just, you know, barely f***ing along, we're just going in circles.
While this virus keeps spreading.
Well, this morning, Facebook says it'll remove some Trump reelection campaign ads. They say that's to prevent confusion about the upcoming U.S. census. Facebook was criticized for the ads running this week. Now, they ask people to quote, "respond now" to an official congressional district census. In addition to age, name, and contact info, the survey includes questions about views on President Trump, Speaker Nancy Pelosi, and the quote radical left agenda. Speaker Pelosi says the ads violate Facebook's misinformation policy on the census. President Trump's campaign has declined comments. All right, get this, your next big vacation could be in outer space. SpaceX has signed a deal to take tourists to the International Space Station. The spacecraft would fit three passengers and a trained flight commander, pretty important there. Once it reaches the space station, passengers can spend at least eight days there. Pricing hasn't been released yet, but missions could happen as late, as soon, rather, as late next year. Wow, yeah, I mean, it's very cool.
I can only imagine how expensive it is, though, I'm just saying.
Also that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, one, I can't afford it, two, don't know if space is on my bucket list, but, yeah, I mean, if someone wanted to like gift me a trip.
Right, you're not gonna, yeah, right.
Of course I'd take it, but, yeah, don't think it's something I'm saving up for.
Interesting, though.
Very cool, yeah. Claire, you know, we're talking weather-wise, gorgeous weekends, just gotta get through today.
Yeah, I'm very excited about this weekend.
Yes, we are.
This morning, though, it's kind of yucky outside. Now, a live look outside on the south side of Lansing, you can kind of see some of that snow falling out there. Roads are mainly just wet, a lot of this is melting as soon as it hits the ground, but still watch out for slick spots, just in case. Temperatures this morning, it's a cold start, 33 is the current temperature this morning in Lansing, 34 outside in Jackson, it's 32 this morning in Mason. We are still dealing with a little bit of that light snow, or a little bit of a mix, at least in Lansing, that extends down towards Jackson. Again, it sticks with us through the morning before we dry out later this afternoon, and the weekend, almost near 60 by Sunday, so something to look forward to.
Yes, exactly, we can make it.
So we can get through it, it's one day.
One day, all right, thank you Claire. Bob and Deb coming up next on the Morning Blend, we'll be right back, stay with us.
You're watching Fox 47 Morning News at 7.
Gita Mahabir is here with Mahabir Wellness, good to see you, Gita.
It's great to see you.
I know that you focus on a lot of treatments, but you also do a lot of education.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. Well, one thing I would like to present today is, for our community, is a spring tip. Spring is approaching us pretty soon, maybe in a couple months, and in summertime, and what's really important for us to know here in Michigan is that there's the broken cloud effect, which means that the UV rays, they really penetrate, they refract, and so we get it very deeply. And so that could also lead to skin cancer, that leads to premature aging, which is fine lines, age spots, wrinkling, and it's really gender neutral, so all ages, your family, your friends, I really like to let our community know, start using sunscreen, this is really important for all of us to be doing now.
Never too late to do that, you actually brought a video, let's take a look.
Absolutely. Hi, welcome, my name is Gita Mahabir with Mahabir Wellness. I'm a licensed professional counselor and a licensed esthetician. Come on in. In here, I'm in the mental health room, where you can receive services for transitions in your life, or any phases you may be going through. This is a safe spot, this is a place of privacy. We bill major insurance, and the type of modality we use is proactive solutions, that means that we work with goals together. So right when we walked in the door, Gita was so welcoming and so nice, she asked me all the questions that she needed to know, very holistic approach about my skin type, because not everyone's skin is the same. Her methods were natural, but with a clinical touch. Everything I wanted done was getting done, but it wasn't too invasive, it was so relaxing, there was a heating pad, there was steam, I just can't, I can't recommend this enough. Today, for the first time ever, I got a lymphatic massage, it was incredibly relaxing, I've never had that done before. It's something like I've never experienced, but I just feel like a brand-new woman. I got, all the fluid was just drained out of my face, I feel like my face is glowing. There was a glow tint, it had SPF 45 in it, and I feel like my skin just looks brand-new, and I couldn't imagine these results after one session. One thing I've noticed when buying products is, I really do like the natural products, but they sometimes don't have the effect that clinical-grade products do, but Gita's products, they're the perfect balance, they're natural, but there's a touch of clinical. Big fan of natural products, and also, it's not tested on animals, so it's cruelty-free, which is so important to me.
Gita, thank you so much, if you'd like more information, you can go to MahabirWellness.com or the numbers on the screen.
This weekend, it's the March Paint Party at Dimes Brew House in Diamond Dale. It's 2 to 5 on Sunday, now you can enjoy beer while painting home decor. All skill levels are welcome, and to register, just head to the website listed on your screen right now. And we'll have more local events and things to do right here on Fox 47, so if you have an event you want to share, send us an email, that's to AroundTown@Fox47News.com. And now it's time to check in with our Around Town reporter to see what else is coming up right here in mid-Michigan.
Around Town Kids!
Hi, my name is Savannah from Northwest Elementary School, and here's what's going on Around for town for kids like me. Come to the Jackson Antique and Flea Market Show at the new American One Expo Center. It is their biggest event inside, whether you are a collector or a picker, you are sure going to find a bargain. For more info on events like this, go to Fox47News.com. My name is Savannah, now back to the Fox 47 Studios.
All right, thanks Savannah. Now, one of the top stories in Michigan now, Art Van Furniture is planning on closing all of its stores. The company is based in Warren, and yesterday, they announced they'll close all Art Van Furniture and Art Van Pure Sleep Stores. Liquidation sales set to start today. Well, Gerber is stepping up their game when it comes to being more environmentally friendly. They're releasing a reusable baby food pouch, now this is the latest effort in Gerber's mission to make all of their packaging recyclable or reusable by 2025. This food pouch will be available in May. All right, after, I want to stress, after you finish watching your Fox 47 Morning News here, get yourself a free donut at Dunkin' Donuts. Every Friday this month, they're giving away a free donut with any